I'd like to call this meeting to order. Given the current shelter in place, order covering the state of California and the social distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing the following changes to participate in planning commission meetings until notified otherwise. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. We are encouraging residents to participate virtually following the directions below. If you are sick, please do not attend the meeting. Any member of the planning commission may participate from a remote location by teleconference. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the city's website. For written comments, the members of the public are encouraged to submit written comments at the city's website at least one hour before the meeting, which is 5:00 P.M. You will be prompted to provide the planning commission meeting date, the item number, your name, your email, and your comment. Please limit to 300 words or three minutes. Please submit a separate form for each item you are commenting on. A copy of your written comment will be provided to the planning commission noting the item number. Your written comment will be made part of the record. Please specify if you would like to have your written comment read into the record. If so, your comment will be read into the record during the public comment portion when the item is heard. Any portion of your comment extending past three minutes may not be read aloud due to time restrictions, but will be made part of the record of proceedings. Please be aware that any written comments received that do not specify a particular agenda item will be marked for the general public comment portion of the agenda. If a written comment is received after 5:00 P.M. on the day of the meeting, efforts will be made to provide the comment to the planning commission during the meeting. However, staff cannot guarantee that written comments received after 5:00 P.M. will be provided to the planning commission during the meeting. All written comments received prior to the end of the meeting will be made part of the record of proceedings. For verbal comments, if you wish to speak to the commission on the item by telephone, you must contact the deputy city planner, Orlando Ramirez, at (559) 324-2345, no later than 5:00 P.M. the day of the meeting. You will be asked to provide your name, phone number, and your email. You'll be emailed instructions to log into WebEx to participate in the meeting. Staff recommends participant login to WebEx at 5:30 P.M. the day of the meeting to perform an audio check. All callers will be placed on mute, and at the appropriate time for your comment, your microphone will be unmuted. You will be asked to speak to the planning commission for up to three minutes. For WebEx participation, reasonable efforts will be made to allow written and verbal comments from a participant communicating with the host of the virtual meeting. To do so, a participant will need to chat with the host and request to make a written or verbal comment. The host will make reasonable efforts to make written and verbal comments available to the planning commission. Due to the new untested format of these meetings, the city cannot guarantee that these written and verbal comments initiated via chat will occur. Participants desiring to make a verbal comment via chat will need to ensure that they access the meeting with audio transmission capabilities. And now I'd like to have the flag closed. Could all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Antuna?
Here.
Commissioner Bettsed?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
Chair Hatcher?
Here.
And can I have a motion for the approval of minutes?
Motion to approve minutes last minute meeting.
Second. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Antuna, seconded by Commissioner Bettsed to approve the minutes of April 23rd. Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bettsed?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Commission Secretary comments?
Don't have any comments, but we did, uh, planning commission did receive additional memo from George Gonzalez, our associate planner. Hopefully he had an opportunity to review that.
Thank you. Do we have any planning commission member comments?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things. In response to the email we got this afternoon, um, if it's possible when we get these late updates, can there be a note attached to it where the changes are on versus what we had? Because we've got to go back and read both of them and compare what we have, which takes quite a bit of time. So if we could get an update, say, hey, go look at, you know, item 14 or whatever.
That's something that we can definitely work on for the next year.
Sure, I'm sure it'd make things easier for us, I know.
Okay.
The development at Peach and West Spruce, the developer has a sign advertising what the development is. The sign is so close to the crosswalk, cars going east to Peach must pull out into the crosswalk to see oncoming traffic. And now we have a lot of people walking. I noticed the other day, people had to walk out into traffic to get around the cars that were in the crosswalk. So if that sign can be moved west another 10 feet or whatever, uh, I mean, sure make, I think, a lot safer for the public.
We can certainly get our code enforcement team on that. One of the big things we strive on is for the line of sight, especially coming into intersections. We require corner cutoffs to where you can place sites, so we will definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, you can't see oncoming traffic.
Okay.
Southbound traffic is real hard to see unless you pull forward. And it is a problem anyway with the barrier they put around it. So low cars can hardly see around that, but other types of cars, uh, sports cars have a problem with it. But I've noticed, I stopped across the street and watched for about a half hour, and almost everybody has to pull out into the crosswalk, almost all the way through it. Most of them are almost all the way through the crosswalk to see oncoming traffic.
We will get into our CRM system tomorrow and make sure that it's dealt with.
Okay. Would it be possible for planning to sit down with the commission? Uh, there's a lot of new reports I see in our agendas that, uh, there's many as 300 to 400 pages that are added to what is put in front of us every month. Is it possible to have a meeting with staff to explain to us what these reports are and what we should look for in them? Because some of them have repeated pages after page after page. So I know it'd help me to understand more because we have the vehicle mileage and, uh, everything else that's going on out there that... I need to, I need to get some more information.
Right.
To see what I'm looking at and why I'm looking at it and what is the real important parts of it.
Okay. And that is something we probably need to work with through our city attorney's office to see if it's not a violation of the Brown Act, but possibly there's a potential to hold in a workshop that addresses all these issues. Is that something that we'd be open to, Mike? Okay, very good.
Anything to make it easier on us because, uh, going through 300, 400 pages extra, I would, I would like something to make it a little bit easier. Uh, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Bettsed, do you have any comments?
No, I do not. Thank you.
You're welcome. So that'll take us to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the planning commission on any matter that is not listed on the agenda.
We have not received any interest from business on the floor.
And then we'll move on to public hearings. Consider items associated with approximately 38.5 acres of land located at the northwest corner of Shepherd and North Clovis Avenue, 6050 Enterprises LP on our applicant, Harbor and Associates representative. Item A, consider approval, a request to approve an environmental finding of a mitigated negative declaration for pre-zone R 2016-10 and vesting tentative tract map TM 6050. Item B, consider approval, R 2016-10, a request to pre-zone from the county AE Exclusive Agricultural Zone District to the Clovis R1 PRD Planned Residential Development Zone District. Item C, consider approval, TM 60, a request to approve a vesting tentative tract map for a 255-lot single-family planned residential development. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, good evening. Staff would like to begin by indicating for the record that the commission this evening received a memo with updated conditions of approval related to this project. The modification was specific to condition number 7DC, uh, which modified the required dedication of the, um, right-of-way for the north side of Shepherd Avenue, and it's being changed from 78 feet currently to 70 feet. This modification is still consistent, um, with the Heritage Grove Design Guidelines. Staff would like to provide a brief background history on the Heritage Grove Design Guidelines. Uh, back in December, on December 5th of 2016, the city council approved the Heritage Grove Design Guidelines for this area. This area is also referred to as the Northwest Urban Center Growth Area in the general plan land use diagram. The design guidelines memorialized specific development standards, circulation plan, thematic street sections, landscaping, or landscape framework, and a plant palette for this area. The intent was to build upon the distinctive culture and agricultural richness of this The guidelines established the overall theme for the, for the area, including design elements such as the architecture and landscape. This will help identify an authentic sense of place for the approximately 30,000 citizens that will call this area their home. On, on December 15, 2015, just about a year before the adoption of the guidelines, the council did officially adopt the name Heritage Grove and associated logo for the four-square-mile Now I'd like to provide just a brief geography of the area encompassing the Heritage Grove, um, area, and that is, it is, uh, it encompasses approximately 2,600 acres of land, and it is generally bounded by Copper Avenue to the north, Shepherd Avenue to the south, Willow Avenue to the west, and Sunnyside Avenue to the east. The first project approved within the Heritage Grove area was back in August of 2018 with the approval of tract 6200, which is a Lennar project, which brought in about 586 homes to this, to this new growth area. The proposed project this evening for the commission's consideration is identified and read on the screen, which if approved by the commission, it will bring in an additional 255 lots to the Heritage Grove. The project, the applicant this evening is requesting two specific entitlements for the commission's consideration. The first one this evening is pre-zone 1610, which the applicant is requesting to pre-zone the entire project site, which is approximately 38 acres from the current county zoning of AE 20 to the Clovis R1 PRD, which is Planned Residential Development Zone District. This, this proposed pre-zoning affects one property, so there are no additional properties involved in this project. The second entitlement the applicant's requesting for your consideration this evening is vesting tentative tract map 6050. This is a proposed 255-lot gated single-family planned resident, residential development with private streets at 6.94 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the medium density land use designation in the general plan. The project is accessible from one main entry along Clovis Avenue and two additional entries along DeWitt Avenue. Both entries on DeWitt, oh, off of DeWitt will exit onto Shepherd Avenue to the south. The project will also include a fire apparatus access road identified in blue on the screen that will be used by the fire department and also as an exit-only option for the residents within the small lot project, or product of this, of this proposed development. The, as part of the project, the applicant is proposing a list of project amenities to accommodate the proposed development. Uh, within the small lot, uh, product on the south half of the project, uh, you, the applicant is proposing a recreational center, uh, with the, with the pool as well to be utilized for the residents within this, um, development. On the north side, the, what is referred to as the large lot product, they will have their own private open space as well, more on the eastern side of the project, right where you see the word Clovis Avenue label. Uh, that's where their open space will be located as well. Now staff, we'd like to just briefly indicate some of the proposed Plan Residential Development setbacks proposed for this project by the applicant. For the larger lot product on the north half of this project, the proposed setbacks are 20 feet to the garage, 10 feet to living area, including porches and projections. On the garage side, the applicant is proposing five feet, and this helps with the commission's concern with providing ample side yard space to properly secure trash bins behind a six-foot fence. On the opposite side of the garage, the applicant is proposing for a four-foot setback and a 10-foot setback for the rear. On the small lot product, which is the southern half of the project, the applicant is proposing a five-foot setback to the garage, four-foot setback to living area, including patios and projections. On the garage side, again, the applicant is proposing five feet, uh, which will provide the ample room to put the, the trash bins, um, behind the fence. On the opposite side, the applicant proposing three feet and four feet for the rear. And I would like to just go back, uh, briefly on the garage setback for the small lot. Uh, over, over the years, staff has, has heard from the commission, and we do take the commission's comments seriously when it comes to the concerns of providing not the 20 feet, um, you know, adequate setback. And in fact, uh, the commission has denied projects in the past when the developer proposed a setback, for example, of 15 feet, uh, just because of the concern that even a portion of the vehicle may stick out and block a, uh, potential sidewalk or even, um, intrude into the street. Uh, and, and, uh, with this proposed project here, the five-foot setback eliminates that concern. Folks will not be able to park in front of the garage, um, you know, with the five-foot setback. They will either have to park in the garage or on the street, which this project will allow parking on both sides of the street. And I do want to discuss something else before I make the final conclusions. Here with the final, uh, with the, with the smaller product, uh, in general, uh, I know that one of the concerns, uh, with this project was, was that it didn't include sidewalks, and I know the commission will probably talk more about that. Uh, one of the reasons why staff was comfortable, at least accepting the, the proposed no sidewalks here, was that one, the project is gated, so it will prevent, um, outside through traffic from going through this project. So the, the interior roads within this project will be utilized by the residents and, and the vehicles within the interior lots. It is, it is understood and expected that they're going to share the road. Um, and also, it also helps with, um, if you notice here on the east side of DeWitt, that is planned focus area, I believe, eight, which is going to be a commercial project. So when that eventually develops, having this project as gated, it will prevent vehicles exiting this commercial center from going through these residential areas, and it will force them to exit out to DeWitt, uh, or to the west onto Minewawa, and eventually down to Shepherd Avenue. Therefore, staff recommends to the council and that the commission this evening approve an environmental finding of a mitigated negative declaration for pre-zone 1610 and vesting tentative tract map 6050. Approve pre-zone 1610, and finally approve vesting tentative tract map 6050, subject to the updated conditions of approval labeled attachment two. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Uh, yes, you were saying that to the west of DeWitt, it's going to be commercial?
Correct, about 10 acres of it.
What type of commercial?
It would be a mixed use, so primarily commercial, retail, um, they could potentially, um, I would like, I would need to look back to see if any potential residential is allowed there, but it's going to be primarily commercial.
We have no sidewalks in either of these two projects. Okay, I have a concern. 37 feet is the width of the streets that are approved? Okay. If we look at the street, two cars take up 16 feet if they're parked on each side because we have parking on both sides of the street allowed. That gives us 21 feet left. If we have a bicycle riding on one side of the street, they have the right-of-way to nine feet, three feet on each side, and the width of a bicycle's about three feet. At least 12 feet left. Is that enough room to be safe if there's traffic on that project?
I, I think it, it will be assumed that the vehicles will need to slow down, um, to, you know, safely pass a walking pedestrian, uh, within the interior of the project.
Okay, we're going to assume that. Okay. Uh, in the elevation, uh, project, there's areas for vehicles to park outside of the garages. Are there going to be charging stations on those for electric cars?
I haven't heard from the developer proposing charging stations, but I'll let them speak about that.
It's something that needs to be addressed because we look into the future, let's look down the road 20 years, how many electric cars are going to be in that development? And they all cannot charge in the garages. So, uh, that's something that needs to be considered. Let's see. The entry to the elevations is off of DeWitt. It's the only entrance, correct?
Correct.
There's 155 homes in that project projected, okay? That's equals, there's two cars per project, per building, per home. That's 310 cars. Now, we're going to have all 310 cars come out of this west entry and exit. They're, they're going to come in there, I should say, they're going to be coming in, and then also we have exit. Now, if we have commercial across the street, we're going to have a lot of traffic on DeWitt. So, my concern is, um, on the east side where the fire exit is now, if that was moved to the north, to the very last lot, and then move those lots down because there's an open space in the south end of that row of lots, correct? Okay? And we have the open space for the project above it. Why could we not put in an entry and exit on the north end of that property? And the way you have the median on, uh, Clovis Avenue, it comes back in because you have it moved over for people to turn, uh, eastbound on Shepherd. Okay, on the north end of that, it comes back. Why not put a left-turn lane in there and allow the entry into there? We're going to have a much safer project. That's something for the, to think about is because right now, we have too many cars coming out on DeWitt at any time during the day, and I can see real problems with that.
The applicant's original map did propose having, uh, that fire apparatus access road and exit only further to the north next to the park, like you indicated. Uh, unfortunately, the problem with that was the fire had a concern that their trucks wouldn't be able to make the turn as soon as they come into the development and turn south into the rest of the, of that small lot product. So that's why the developer went ahead and moved it further south to where you see it there in blue.
If he gives a little bit of the land on the, the open ground, the open space to the north of it, you can make, I believe, a large enough radius if you sit down and look at it. So you're going to have to let them share something there, but we're looking at a real problem. I have, I have a hard time accepting this the way it is because down the road in the future, we're going to have a huge problem. We're going to have problems with people turning north off of Shepherd and backing up because of traffic going in at peak hours. So I, I think that something that needs to be looked at.
Just for clarification, uh, turning north off of that blue arrow?
No, no, no. Off, off of Shepherd onto DeWitt.
Oh.
We're going to have a backup of traffic there. To where if we can split that traffic, the people that live on the west side will most likely go in on DeWitt, those that live on the east side are going to come in off of Clovis Avenue. So I think by doing this, it's going to make a better project, and it's going to make it a lot safer for everybody. And this is looking down the road 20 years from now, not, yeah, we won't have the problem today, but when Heritage Grove's developed out, we're going to have a problem. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
You have a question? Commissioner Bettsed, do you have any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then I'll open up to the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, excuse me. I'm Dirk Pushel. My business dress is 923 Van Ness in Fresno. Perhaps I could start with some of the concerns that were raised by Commissioner Hinkle, probably the most efficient way. Um, the, we, of about the thousand pages of the staff report, about 500 or 600 of them were associated with the traffic study, biological, and air study, cultural studies, et cetera. But focusing on the traffic study for just a moment, Jose Benavides from JLB Traffic Engineering did a comprehensive traffic evaluation, did not identify the concerns that you're raising, but just to clarify, the blue arrow that you see is a right turn out, so there is an exit. And I know that the staff was concerned about stacking distances of Clovis Avenue to Shepherd. There is a sidewalk component to the project in the elevations, if you can barely see it, north of the parking areas, to have kind of a loop system. With respect to the road widths, uh, these are standard road widths that you have seen before as a commission, and they have proven to work. I think staff's done a very good job identifying the major issues associated with the project. You brought up something that we didn't talk about amongst ourselves, and that was the electrical, uh, connections for electrical vehicles. It's certainly something that we can consider, we could certainly wire for them. We don't know where they'd be located, but it's certainly something that we would look into, and I think it's a good point. But we, we have worked hard with staff, all of the conditions are acceptable to us, and we ask that you support the project as they recommend. Um, we are, um, about two and a half times over the required open space, and we think this is a very good project integrating two, uh, market points, if you will, the Chadwick product that you don't usually see, uh, and with elevations that you see quite frequently because it's so popular in the Clovis community. So we thank you for your time. The project engineer, Stan Harbor, is here. If you have any questions that I can't answer, we'd be happy to have Stan, um, come up and talk to you about those, those questions. We thank you for your time this evening.
That's a fair question.
Uh, yeah, my concern was the entry into the project.
Understood.
We, we have some real, I see some real issues.
I understand.
On it. And again- And again, thinking ahead, what is this area going to look like 25, 30 years from now? And that's what we need to address today. It's going to be a lot easier to address today than try to do something 20 years down the road. So I would like to see some thought on relocating that exit to an entry exit to, on the north end on it, because I just think it's going to be much better overall than again, the electrical, the charging for electric cars, as you know, in 2050, there will only be electric cars. So it's something that we need to address today.
I'm looking forward to it.
Because your project, I hope will still be there in that time. But it's something that if you could plan ahead for that, I think it's just going to make life easier for everybody.
That's an excellent point and we will seriously consider how we can accommodate those electrical vehicles.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Dirk Pushel, Alma Atuna for the record. I have a little bit of a concern with your smaller project, the garage spacing. I actually kind of tested various vehicles that we own and various sized people. My son's 6'4", I'm 5'3", my daughter's five foot and we all drive different vehicles. And I measured the 10 feet, you know, the 16 feet wide and it was a really tight, you know, getting out of your vehicle. If you had, for example, my daughter is five feet, weighs 110 pounds, drives a little Toyota. For her to swing her door open if she had two people in her car, this is, I'm sorry, I'm specifically speaking about your one car garage, it was really difficult for her to be able to open the doors all the way, to be able to exit her vehicle and never mind, my son is 6'4" and him, you had to kind of squeeze all the way out. He'd have to park, if we owned a home like this, we'd have to park all the way over to the right and for him to be able to get out of his vehicle. So I guess my first question is, what is your target demographic? Who is going to be buying these homes? And the fact that we have a five foot setback, you have to park your car in your garage or you have to get everyone out and then pull into the garage, only one person goes into the garage, what happens if it's raining? I mean, there's just a plethora of things, but I guess maybe walk me through your thought process for that.
Well, it's interesting because on the face of it, you'd think it was going to be the first time buyers and it's not. It's actually an array of people who are buying lifestyle and they don't want to do a yard. Completely inverse of my feeling because I love doing a yard, but these yards are small because these people want to go out and have fun, ride their bike, go hiking. So the yard is the last thing they want to think about Saturday, Sunday, or any other time. We also have a lot of move downs that people say, you know what, I'd love to have another place at the coast, I want to visit my grandkids in Arizona or wherever, so I don't want a big home anymore. I don't, I'm tired of cleaning it, I don't want to have the hassles of a big home, but this is a safe, really well-built home in a great neighborhood. So we see wide ranges. To be able to say, well, it's just one group is, wouldn't, wouldn't be accurate, it wouldn't portray an accurate picture of who our buyers are. Some of the questions that the commission has asked about the project over time, I think are, are very good questions because the whole concept of the elevations is to try to get as much home as we can, as much value as we can, as much quality as we can on these small lots at certain densities. Are there trade-offs? Yes, there are. One of them is, for example, the one car garage. The folks don't have to buy that unit. They may say, look, that's not for me, I'm too big, my car doors will not swing open, I worry. I have a custom home and I still put up those little, those little plastic panels because when I get out of the car, I want to be real careful that I don't bang the door. But having said that, a lot of people say, I can afford this home, it's in a great location, it's near the parks, I want to be there and I'm willing to give up some, some area in the garage to be here. So we've tried to literally have the project evolve over time. It actually is a different project than you saw some years ago when we first introduced it at Harlan Ranch, because we hear from our buyers as well, the last thing we want to do is offer product that people go, we don't want to buy this. And actually, it's one of our best sellers because people love the homes. So it is a trade-off. We've tried to make tweaks to improve it, so, but it's still, it's still a small home on a small lot for a focused group of people who wants that kind of lifestyle.
Good evening, Mr. Pushel, this is Commissioner Cunningham for the record. I suspect you already know what I'm going to break up. Do you have a pointer?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. When you said that there are sidewalks in the elevation project, could you point those out to me?
Yeah, I sure can. There's others.
Turn it around.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, how is it? There's sidewalks here.
You have to hold it on.
George, yeah, so I guess I could walk up to the screen.
Sure. Okay, and those are both, on both the private streets I'm looking at, it would be the northernmost part of the interior street on the north street and the southernmost on the south street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
And?
That's, that's going to be my bugaboo is, and the proposal was no sidewalks and I, I'll admit, I skimmed through those 1,149 pages, but I didn't see anything mentioning the sidewalks, I'm assuming it was in there somewhere.
It is, it is mentioned, yeah. It wasn't hidden, it is mentioned. And as a matter of fact, in the staff report, it talks about the two projects essentially have to comply with two different standards. The northern project, because it's lot size and gated, doesn't have to have sidewalks. The second project, the elevation, Chadwick to the north and the elevation to the south, actually built, will build a loop system for traffic circulation. As you can see, connect that out.
Okay. Okay, on the Chadwicks, even though they're larger sizes and all that, and there is no sidewalks on anywhere in that proposed.
That is correct. And that's consistent with your road standards.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
That's consistent with your standards.
Okay.
Not, they're not required.
Not required. I'm missing that standard, but I'll, my concern is based kind of what Commissioner Hinkle has said. Cars parked on both sides, I assume is authorized on these streets, correct?
Correct.
During this current shelter in place, I've noticed in my neighborhood, which is not too far from that, marked increase in pedestrian traffic and even though they have sidewalks, they tend to walk in the street as well. And of course, we're not gated, so my, this is where my mind is coming from, is an issue of safety. It always will come from the issues of safety. And you satisfied my concern on the elevations project, but I still have a concern on the Chadwick. If you don't provide sidewalks, then people are going to walk in the streets and then you have a coexistence problem with various forms of traffic using the same pavement. Within the last week, I lost a friend who was bicycling up on Auberry Road and tried to occupy the same space as a motorcycle and lost. So I get these recurring images of safety that I'm looking to embrace and I would like to see a sidewalk in both projects. But you've answered what you can answer, I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do. Mr. Pushel, Brian Bedstead for the record. Given the background discussing here, particularly the small garage, limited garage setback, with regard to structure, will the developer, I guess to be more specific, is each residence limited to a fixed number of vehicles?
Presume he's asking, does the homeowners association have traffic enforcement authority? And the answer is yes, and that's one of the advantages of having the HOA and the gates.
So I am asking that Dirk, but specifically, is each residence limited to two vehicles, unlimited number? I guess what I'm hypothesizing is, what happens when a residence has multiple vehicles? Is that going to further the street parking potentially bleed over to even this commercial development that could be to the west someday?
I think, I think the question was, what if someone has an extraordinary amount of cars? How does the subdivision design accommodate those, particularly with respect to the proximity to planned commercial? And I think the, the answer is that we comply with the onsite parking requirements of the ordinance and we also have on-street parking. So we, we do comply with the ordinance requirements.
Commissioner Bedstead, I hope we were able to answer your question correctly, your communication was breaking out there.
That's unfortunate. I'll try to place this in the chat here and some.
Commissioner Bedstead, could you possibly type in your questions or your concerns?
Commissioner Bedstead just asked, is there a fixed number of vehicles allowed with each residence?
Mr. Pushel?
I'm sorry.
Maria, could you mind repeating the question?
Yes. Commissioner Bedstead asks, is there a fixed number of vehicles allowed with each residence?
No. These are all fee simple, they're not rented. So again, we would assume that the prudent buyer is going to look at this home and say, does this fit my lifestyle and not bring more vehicles than can be accommodated. Again, we are complying with the ordinance. I should also mention another time, just to reinforce this, that the 36-foot standard allows parking on both sides of the street.
Thank you Dirk.
And Lauren, Lauren brought up another point, there's an additional 122 parking stalls in, free parking stalls in the project. Those, those tiers of parking, and I hope the commissioner can see it at home, there are additional tiers of parking, yes, right there, those additional tiers total 122 stalls.
Mr. Pushel, I have a follow-up question to Commissioner Bedstead's and my original question regarding to the garage sizing in your smaller elevation. Does your HOA require homeowners to park their vehicle in the garage? Meaning if you had someone purchase a vehicle, purchase a home and they opt to use their garage for storage and park on the street? Is it required that they park their?
They will and that's an ongoing problem in every subdivision. People have three-car garages and there's junk in the first two. It seems like it doesn't matter what price point of product you're, you're in. I'm very active in our board in the Dominion and we have in our subdivision, I think there's 127 homes, there's only one that has a two-car garage and yet when you walk by them, some people have got these things just packed full of stuff, but it's just, it's an ongoing problem and I don't know that there's an answer to it.
I guess my concern is that in other developments, the setbacks allow for a driveway and a vehicle to sit in the driveway, so if someone chooses to store junk in their garage, I'm sure it's not junk, but if they choose to utilize it as storage, they do have the option of parking in their driveway rather than on the street. And with your smaller units, that option is not available to them, so I guess I was just concerned that it would create more vehicles on the street. And I also like Commissioner Hinkle stated, I have concerns of the street width, I know that we're, it's in compliance, but I would be concerned for vehicles being parked on both sides and people walking and motorcycling and there being some type of accident because of it. Because of the width of the street just shortening because of the vehicles being parked on opposite side.
Vehicles aren't going to get, they're not going to protrude into the street, so the vehicles are going to be in the garages or they're going to be in their driveways. And then from there, you have a standard configuration of parking on both sides and travel lanes.
Thank you.
And the elevations, did I understand you correctly that they will not be rentals?
We're going to sell them and then, as you know, the market has its own way of people buying homes, but the intent is clearly that they be sold, not rented.
So you will not have anything in there stating that there will not be, rentals will not be allowed in the elevations?
I don't, I don't have an answer to that. We haven't put that in there, yeah.
It's something you might want to think about doing because, a couple things, it keeps the development at a higher rate.
And it may stop, it may stop the first group of buyers, but I think as it evolves, the market's going to do what it does.
If that's put into, I forget the wording, but if it's put in there that it can be documented that those can never be rented, it can be put into the deed, that the property can never be rented.
Understood.
That's something you need to look at with legal.
Understood.
And that will help with your development and with people living there versus having to put up with people that are renting and don't care about the development. Everybody has a concern in the development, so it's something you might want to think about on that.
And there again, that's another advantage of the HOA because
Yes.
The commission typically sees many subdivisions that don't have HOAs and they're fee simple sales and there's really no way to control any of the things that we're talking about tonight. So the highest level of control is first gating, keeping the unwanted out and then having an HOA association with ability to find.
Yes, and the city of Clovis does this with the homes that they build for affordable housing. They can never be rented.
They can't be lived in.
So you might want to talk to them about how they do that on it. Now, being in real estate, what I'm seeing is this type of development, there's two main classes. We have those that are retiring and want to downsize and don't want all the yard and stuff because they want to travel a lot, they don't want to have to come home in two weeks to mow the yard and things like that. So there's So you might want to talk to them about how they do that on it. Now, being in real estate, what I'm seeing is this type of development, there's two main classes. We have those that are retiring and want to downsize and don't want all the yard and stuff because they want to travel a lot. They don't want to have to come home in two weeks to mow the yard and things like that. So this is very interesting to them. They would like to live here. Then you have some of the first-time homebuyers that don't have families and stuff. They do the same thing. They don't want to do all that stuff. They want to live their life as they are. And so it's a burden to be doing yard work and stuff. So we see those two types of people as buyers for this type of project on it. One thing we're going to see more of in the future, and what's going on today is setting the pattern. But I think you're going to see multiple families living in units like this. So you may have three people in one bedroom. So it's something like, and when I was talking about the charging stations, the outlots that you have are a perfect place to put those. You could have every other stall or three, four stalls out of the whole thing as a charging station. But again, that's something that needs to really be considered because we know what happens in 2050.
We think you brought up a very good point in that regard.
I think it'll open up people that have multiple cars that are electric. It'll open up that they may want to buy here because it has these charging stations.
Understood.
And so it could put a little more value in your project.
I think that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open it up to the public for anyone who has a comment in favor of this project.
As of this public hearing, staff has not received any correspondence or concerns.
Open it up for anybody to speak in opposition. Okay. I'll bring it back to, any of the other commissioners have any other questions?
I do, and it's for staff. And it's in regards to the traffic study. One of the concerns outlined was Miniwawa Avenue in Beheimer exceeding its LOS threshold. Maybe we can elaborate on that. What are we going to do to fix that? I know that the suggestion was to add turning lanes to alleviate that. But maybe you can elaborate a little bit on that.
Yeah, Sean Smith, Engineering Department. You read the traffic report correctly. It identifies that there are some level of service operation difficulties today without the project. And they suggest adding left turn lanes for both north and southbound to help with the delay in the level of service at that intersection. Right now, that intersection is fully in the county. So for the city to be able to make any changes, we would have to work side by side with the county and identify some funding or some other mechanism to make that happen. I don't believe the pavement is wide enough today to be able to make it, which is simply striping. So it might take a little bit of effort, moving some poles, adding some pavement, things like that. But in the future, when it does get annexed into the city, then the city is planning to put a traffic signal there, which is identified as a long-term mitigation. And that will then greatly improve the level of service and shorten the delay at that intersection.
I'm sorry, I have one follow-up. So the suggestions that are made through the traffic study, they're just specifically that. There are issues that are identified and suggestions to alleviate the issue, I'm assuming. That's all they are. And then the city or the developer, in conjunction with the developer, have the option to follow those recommendations or forego them if they choose.
Yeah. When we get those recommendations in the reports, we need to look at the proportionality. We need to compare the project and its impact against the suggested mitigation. And there's times where the project impact is minimal compared to the cost or the impact of the mitigation. And so instead of doing improvements, sometimes just a fee contribution is sufficient. And that's the case with this project. The mitigations that they identify in the traffic study will be able to be met through their fee obligations.
Thank you.
If there's more questions about the traffic coming out of the subdivision in Shepherd and DeWitt, I can help kind of point to where that's identified in the traffic study.
One question, by the way, I'm going to close the public portion, sorry. Should have done that before.
My concern is traffic into, because you've already set for them to exit, but traffic entering the project, having 300 cars come off of DeWitt, I think is loading that intersection. To where we need to look at making it possible on the east side, on the north end of the east side of the project. To me, with the open space and by moving it down and taking out the entry, the exit that is there now, that you would have ample room to make an entry into there even by fire department.
So I do note that, that having one entrance does, it focuses all the traffic in and out. So in the package that you have, if you happen to turn to page 786, that's a portion of the traffic study. It gives an exhibit that shows the traffic studies impacts in 2040. So what that is assuming, that is assuming full buildout of this project plus buildout of the adjacent area. So it'd be assuming you have commercial, you have residential even to the north. Okay. 786, that specifically is the 2040 project-only trips, so the full buildout of that project. There is not traffic counts specific to that intersection of Shepherd and DeWitt. But you can only make a right out. So presumably, all the traffic is going to go to Shepherd and Miniwawa. So if you look at the top intersection identified as number three, Shepherd and Miniwawa, it gives numbers of westbound traffic on Shepherd at Miniwawa. And you see AM peak trips for a total of 60 cars. So presumably, you have 60 cars per peak hour coming out of that one street and coming to Shepherd and Miniwawa. So based on that, that's, I had the same initial thought that having one access was going to really focus a lot of the traffic. And we might need to have more porosity. But then looking at that one and thinking of 60 trips per hour, that breaks down to one car per minute for me. And so given that, that satisfied my curiosity, and I didn't think that there was much of an impact there.
With the design of the future, design that I see on this page of Clovis Avenue, there's going to be a lot of traffic on Clovis Avenue. From the north on it. And I just think it would be easier for leaving the project and people, instead of people making a U-turn at Shepherd to go east. Let's get them on Clovis Avenue so they can come out and make a nice turn off of Clovis Avenue and go east to go to the shopping center over on Fowler. Lots of people go there. And so I can, I can see it just being a better flow of traffic and safer for everybody down the road. One car per minute, that's a lot of cars. That's a lot of cars to be pulling out and going through there. An increase at Miniwawa that is backed up now from all the traffic going west from the Harlan Ranch area that's going down Miniwawa. So we're just causing a big traffic problem there. Let's solve it today instead of trying to solve it 20 years from now. We need to start thinking about that. Keep our expenses down. We need to think about what's going to be here 30 years from now. That's what we really need. We need to get out of the 20-year window. It's 30 years from now because we already know what's happening in 30 years from now if you read some of the laws that are out there. So it's changing and 30 years is going to be here before we know it. So let's address this. Let's fix it now so it's not a problem down the road. Everybody can work together to do it now. If we try to change it down the road, it's going to be impossible to do. So that's the problem I have with all of this is it's, I would make a motion to approve, I would put in there that that be addressed.
Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any final questions?
Hopefully, I'm transmitting. I do not have a question.
I'm going to take that as a no. Applicant, do you have any rebuttal? Okay. I will ask the commissioners, do you guys have any final comments or make a motion?
I'll go ahead and start. I'll make a motion to approve a request for environmental findings mitigating negative declaration for rezone 2016-10 vesting tentative track map TM 6050.
Okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Antuna, to approve the mitigating deck for the project. Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve a request to rezone from County 820, Zone District to the Clovis R-1.BRD for 2016-10.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Antuna, to approve R 2016-10. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Track Map 6050 with the amendment that the entrance and exit to the project on the east side of the elevation be addressed to make a safer entry and exit.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve tentative map 6050, subject to the modified conditions specific to circulation. Commissioner Hinkle? Yes. Commissioner, Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
For the reasons I have stated before, no.
Moving on to the next item, item number three. Consider approval, general plan consistency finding for the proposed 2020-2021 community investment program. Steph?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Dad Eri. I am the Community Investment Program Manager for the City of Clovis. Tonight, I'm presenting to you the proposed 2020-21 Community Investment Program budget inclusive of the five-year community investment program. Section 65401 of the Government Code calls for the Planning Commission's review and consideration of the annual capital improvement program. City of Clovis refers to its capital improvement program as the Community Investment Program. The purpose of this provision is to have the Planning Commission review the community investment program and make a specific finding that it is in accordance with the general plan and relevant specific plans. The Clovis City Council can now proceed with adoption of the budget. The staff is recommending the adoption of a resolution finding the proposed 2020-21 Community Investment Program is consistent with the general plan and relevant specific plans of the City of Clovis. The proposed Community Investment Program budget is a 64-page document attached to the report submitted to the Planning Commission. The projects that are proposed in the program have been identified in consultation with and support from the various city department heads, their representatives, and other applicable staff. This collaborative process has assisted in forming a program that provides a selection of specific projects that are necessary for the public, service, utility, and other and/or safety purposes and are consistent with the city goals. This specific slide gives a brief overview of community investment programs. In the 2020-21 CIP budget, it totals just under $59 million. And on this chart, you can see how the capital projects are distributed in the program areas of government facilities, sewer, parks, streets, water, refuges, and housing development. Various project components consist of design, right-of-way acquisition, and/or construction. In the 2020-21, the budget is comprised of just over 60 projects. The majority of the funding for the street projects is from federal and state grants. In the 2020-21, the budget has around $18.5 million in revenue coming from federal grants and regional Measure C funding for specific street projects. Gas sales tax provides for approximately $2.6 million in funding. And Measure C pass-through funding is estimated at about $2.9 million. Just a little preview of how we see the future bids coming in for our projects. Recently, we've had bids come in during the COVID-19 crisis, and we've had extremely favorable numbers come in. So our project costs seem to be going down. We seem to think that's attributable to the private industry not doing so well. So a lot of people are very hungry for work in the public industry. We think that might, the city might benefit on that as far as our capital projects going forward in the near future. Some noteworthy projects in the budget are the Landmark Square site development, which includes a senior center, transit station, and a future county library. We are scheduled to try and go out to construction with that project this winter. Design of the Loma Vista Village Green Park. And we have many street projects in the budget. Two significant ones are the design and construction of Shaw Avenue's street widening from DeWolfe to McCall and Hernan Avenue's street widening from Temperance to Locan. Both those projects are regional Measure C funded. And as usual, every year, we have a Cape and Slurry Project for our local streets that does preventive maintenance on approximately 10 miles of the local streets per year. Lastly, we have construction of Fire Station 6 in the southeast area, which we plan to go out to construct with that sometime this winter or early next year. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do we have anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor or of this item?
As of this moment, we do not have anyone from the public.
Anyone to speak in opposition either? Okay. Do you have any other follow-up questions or comments? I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the commission.
Is this a receive and file or do we need to take an action on it?
We do actually take action on the resolution for this.
So the motion, if we made one, would be to approve or accept the?
Consider approval.
It would be a motion to adopt the resolution. That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who is the second? I have a motion by Chair Hatcher, seconded by Commissioner Hinkle, to adopt the CIP budget resolution. Commissioner, Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no other items, I adjourn this meeting at 7:08.